Good evening, everyone. It being about six thirty-nine, we'll get the meeting started. Call meeting in order. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is three-nothing, three to zero. Two quick things. Comcast just crashed, so we are not live right now. We may be live in a little bit. So that is why you may be seeing this later than Tuesday night. And John will be here in a couple of minutes. So we'll start, why don't we start right in with a walk-in? Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is a discussion vote for an outdoor entertainment permit, a DJ for a wedding reception on one thirty-nine Edward Foster Road. Is anyone here for that? Come on up. How you doing?
How you doing? DJ Callahan, this is my fiancee, Amanda Barrow.
Hi.
And we're here to request an outdoor entertainment permit for June twenty-third, two thousand twelve, at one thirty-nine Edward Foster Road. The event will start at five PM and go till ten thirty PM. And there will be a DJ there having amplified music. And we have already notified all the immediate neighbors and have a parking permit of fifty-five spaces at Peggotty Beach Parking Lot with a shuttle along with it.
Great, so it's a private residence?
Yep.
And you've asked all the neighbors?
Yep.
And nothing back great?
Yep.
And it's on June twenty-third, you said?
Yep.
For the two of you?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Think they covered all the bases.
Great. And, I'm sorry, the time was till ten o'clock, so the DJ will play till ten?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
Okay, so let's change. Great. So whoever's making the motion, it's from five to ten thirty.
Motion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Amanda Barrow for a DJ to play amplified music from five PM to ten thirty PM at a wedding reception at one thirty-nine Edward Foster Road.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Congratulations. It's gonna be a beautiful day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We hope so. Great for us.
Have fun.
See you guys soon.
Okay, moving on to item number four, which is a discussion vote for a temporary extension of an indoor entertainment license at the River Club. Anyone here for them? No one? So this is for the, is this the Cohasset after-prom party?
Yes.
So they wanna change the hours? Did we currently give them one, Kim?
They did last year.
Did we already give them one for this year, or no?
No, we did not.
Okay, so it's, if this is a new one, it's not a change.
It's had it for the past three or four years, I believe. It just extends their indoor entertainment license, their annual one, from twelve, which usually ends at twelve midnight, to three in the morning, just for DJ indoor music.
Great. Do you know if they asked the neighbors and informed them?
Yes, they said they did. They've done, they said they did it the same way that they've done in the past years. Yeah, they've been there four years, and there's been no problems.
Good, please. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a temporary extension of the indoor entertainment license for the River Club, seventy-eight Borter Street, from May twenty-six, two thousand twelve, from twelve AM to three AM for the after-prom party.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. You know what I meant to ask before we got started? Is anyone recording the meeting this evening? No one is, great. Moving on to item number five, which is a one-day wine and malt beverage license at Cituate Harbor Community Building for, is it Carlton Sullivan? Anyone here for that? Come on up.
Hi.
Hi. So you are, tell us what you're gonna do.
Um...
First, tell us who you are and your address.
Um, I'm Pat Carlton, forty-eighth Seaview Ave. And we are celebrating our daughter's graduation from college. We're sponsoring with her husband. That's, she's Julia Carlton Sullivan. And it's at the Cituate Harbor Community Building, which we feel very privileged to be one of the last ones to use it for a private function.
Great.
And we will be hiring Beth Golden, who has submitted her liability insurance. She's done several functions here. That is how I met her. When she was doing a private function, I asked if I could just see the layout. And I guess the host let me, very graciously, let me come in. And that's where I met Beth.
Great spot. And it's from, it's on this weekend?
Yes, Saturday from...
Saturday the twenty-sixth, from four to eight.
Four to eight.
Right, and how are you gonna clean, are you, are you guys gonna clean it, or did you hire a cleaner to?
Uh, we were gonna clean it.
Yeah, great. That's the one concern that we've had. Any discussion?
We, we requested it, we're inviting people for four to eight, but we have requested it, I think, from two to ten, so they would have plenty of time to set up and to clean up.
From two to ten, okay.
Just, I know Pat and I know Kevin, they're great people, and I know they'll do a great job, so.
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to the Carlton slash Sullivan family for a function that to be held on Saturday, May twenty-six, two thousand twelve, from four to eight?
Two to ten.
Two to ten, from two PM to ten PM at the Cituate Harbor Community Building, forty-four Jericho Road.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you, have a great day.
Congratulations.
Item number six is a discussion vote, permission to use the town-owned parking lot for the North Cituate Farmers Market.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm sorry, if we could just have clarification on item number five that you just voted. May I speak to...
Yes.
Did you want the liquor license to be extended?
No.
Could we correct that motion to protect for just liquor being served from four to eight? They have the building until ten for cleanup. They're not gonna be serving alcohol.
Do you wanna...
Joe's motion, just move to amend.
I would draw the motion.
Just move to amend.
Move to amend, have it amended.
Second that.
Great, so it's amended from liquor serving from four to eight.
All in favor?
All, second by Ms. Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Great. Thank you, Kim. Moving on to item number six, which is the North Cituate Farmers Market. You guys could just tell us your names and addresses.
Uh, Michael Lane, two eighty Gant Road. And I'm representing my wife, Jessica.
Mark Flaherty, thirty-four Stockbridge Road.
Great. And you guys are here to ask permission to use the North Cituate Tea Parking Lot for the Farmers Market that, is this the second, the third year?
This'll be year number four.
Year number four.
Yes. Cruising right along.
Great.
Going very well.
Quick, anyone have any concerns? We've got pictures and obviously the experience of the last years, I don't think there's been any complaints.
Yep, last year went very, very well. Year three really came together. And we have some new people, we're fully insured with the Massachusetts Federation of Agriculture. The whole market is insured.
And the town as well.
And the town.
Right. Great, motion?
Just, just let you know, it's Wednesdays afternoon.
Wednesdays, three to seven.
From, three to seven.
Starting June twentieth through the last Wednesday in September. All right?
PR going for you, Mark.
Thank you, appreciate that, Joe.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant permission to the Cituate Farmers Market to utilize the town-owned parking lot in front of the WPA Building and out Cituate on Wednesdays from two PM to seven PM, June through October, in accordance with all rules and regulations set forth by the Cituate Police Department.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, four to zero. Good luck, guys. You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, keep it up.
We'll see you at the market. Thanks.
Moving on to item number seven, which is the seawall easement for one seventeen Turner Road. Is Kevin coming in? I don't...
I think she just went to get somebody. Tricia ran out. Second.
So this is the issue where we need an easement to get on his land to do the proper repair to the seawall over on Edward Foster Road, Turner Road. Al, do you wanna?
Yes. Sorry, you're moving along very quickly tonight, gentlemen. This is item number seven?
Item seven, yep.
Yes. As you remember, two weeks ago, we came to you discussing the need to take an easement at the property at one seventeen Turner Road. At that time, there was some discussion that perhaps the owner, Mr. Farrington, would grant an easement, and therefore the Board would not have to take that action. There were discussions between Mr. Farrington and several other members of the town concerning this. Mr. Farrington has written us as of Friday indicating that he does not wish to grant an easement.
So we went back to him, we postponed it for two weeks, we went back to him to try and get John's suggestion, a limited easement, and we just couldn't work that out. So now...
Well, we, yeah, we, he appeared to change his mind. The discussion here was that the word, inserting the word "limited" would in fact solve the problem. Consultation with town, the town attorney, said that is a reasonable thing to go do if it would, you know, move things along. We've incurred some legal costs as a result of this and wasted two, two weeks, and now we're at this juncture where we're back at the table asking for the same thing we asked for before. And I'd just like to, for the record, state that Mr. Farrington, in his letter to the Department of Public Works, indicated through several statements that he felt that indeed the work would provide little to no benefit to his properties. And I responded to him to the effect that in actuality, the repairing the seawall that's adjacent to and partially in front of his property would significantly improve the value of the property versus today, where basically there's a stone rubble wall that was a temporary fix put in now eighteen months ago in an attempt to hold back the sea so that the house, the adjacent house and houses behind aren't washed away. The temporary fix is in place, it's by no means pretty. The fix we're now going to make using public monies is going to be a significant improvement in the strength of that seawall, improving the footing, the face, the height, and importantly, improving what's known as the splashback area, where now storm surges come over the wall and erode what's behind, tear the sand away, and cause the wall to have no foundation and therefore collapse like this and then break apart. So this repair is not only going to repair the breach, it's going to install an engineered splashback that is on about two-thirds of the wall that's front of his property, and then repairing the stone revetment that's one hundred percent in front of his property. So we would suggest that in fact this is a structure that will improve at public expense his property significantly.
Just, Al, just, I know that the wall, there's only a small portion of the wall, but you're saying the stone revetment in, directly in front of the wall facing the ocean's getting replaced?
The entire stone revetment along all three properties and plus adjacent properties is being repaired and replaced, yes. So the, the first line of defense is the stone revetment, that's one hundred percent being replaced. Then there is the concrete stone wall, the concrete wall, which is a small portion...
Small little portion, but then the backsplash on the rear.
Only, we're only going to the cut lines, where, cut lines on both sides. And then the splashback is intended to prevent that section that we repaired and the adjacent sections from being undermined.
I'm with you, okay. Thank you.
And this is all public seawall that we're, excuse me, that we're repairing, although it does have obviously benefit to, to him, you know? If it breaches, then he's gonna feel a lot of pain in the breach. So in a nutshell, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to file, sign the easement, file the easement for the taking, there'll be some sort of battle at this point in time in terms of using it or not, using, we'll have to praise his property and, and go through this. It'll be delayed probably for an extended period of time.
Well, actually, I think what'll happen is you'll, you'll do the taking, then we'll incur some legal expense in doing the filing in Plymouth County. At that point, the land has been, easement has been taken, and we will proceed to go out for bid. We've, we've had the bid package ready since December, wall all engineered, reviewed with all the neighbors, and so we will then immediately go out to bid, expect within, say, six weeks we'll begin, be out there doing construction.
Motion?
Can I have, I have a couple of questions. Al, this easement that we're gonna take, is that, so that can be used down the road in ten or twenty years? So we wouldn't have to go through this? If another storm were to, you know, do damage to the seawall?
Right. This is an easement just as if, let's say on your street, we agreed we're gonna put in some drainage?
Right.
To improve the street and the properties in the area. However, the drainage needed to have an outfall, and you would grant us an easement across your property, the town would install at public expense that drainage pipe covered, and you would grant an easement in perpetuity for the limited purposes of us being able to repair that. Let's say there was a collapse of the drainage system, or it needed to be a TV camera because it was filled up.
Right.
We would have the ability to, for the limited purposes of maintaining it, go in there and do that maintenance and then come back out again. That's the same thing here. This is an easement for accessing it to maintain it. It's not an easement for parking on it, or easement for using it as a beach, an easement for anything other than being able to maintain this splashback which protects the wall, which protects his and other properties.
Okay, so this is probably between his house and another house? Okay? It doesn't, it's not in front of his house, it's to access...
It's between the seawall and there's the, there's the seawall and then there's a splashpad behind it?
Right.
Yes.
All right, so it's, he's the only, oh, no, the others have already granted their easements.
That's correct.
Okay. The woman that was here last time when we talked about this said that this work was done without granting any easements. Was it the same type of work? Has technology changed? Is that why we have to have an easement now where we didn't before?
I don't know about before.
I think, I thought she was saying that it was done from the seaside, the ocean side.
How, right.
As opposed from doing it from the property side, from the, the home side. And I think that's what she was saying. And I, my understanding was with, talking to, I forget the guy's name, but his name was Mooney from DCR, is that by getting an easement on the backside of the wall, closest to the house, it's less costly because you have to deal with the tides?
Right.
And all that other stuff. But also, if there's a further breach along the wall, this is the way to gain access because, because of the proximity of the homes, because they're so close. So they'll start, we're an opening to go back there, so.
It's, again, go back to the drainage easement, you know, in the drainage easement, you, if you're gonna spend money to put in drainage, you wanna be able to maintain it.
Right.
Same thing, if we're gonna make repairs to this wall, on the backside and the front side, we wanna be able to get in and maintain it. Other walls, such as some of the seawall work done recently along the cliffs, was all done from the seaside?
Mm-hmm.
And therefore no easements were needed on those properties. It was only revetment repair. However, we did need to trespass across some properties to get to it. And so we needed to get easements from those property owners prior to being able to go across their properties to get to where the repairs were made.
And then what do we do at the annual town meeting? With the easements? We did something so we don't have to go through this process?
Uh, we had a warrant article at town meeting that we, that was, that was not carried forward. There was a, it was a proposed warrant article at town meeting to take easements all up and down the coast.
No, what John's referring to is the, the last town meeting?
Right.
Because we couldn't...
Obtain these?
Yeah, access without doing a taking. So that town meeting approved the town being able to do takings for this purpose, because what we've been doing since the storm is trying to get access. And when we weren't granted access, we had to get town meeting authorization to be allowed to do a taking.
But that's, that's going forward for any type of takings along the wall in the future, not just specific places?
For seawalls, yes, absolutely, for seawalls.
Right. That's good, thanks.
And John pointed out that the other two neighbors that are on this diagram have both given easements.
Right.
Any further discussion? Great, well, I think we, we extended ourselves another two weeks to try and make it happen, and it still didn't happen, so we're to the point now where we have to proceed with this. So, a motion?
Yeah, I'm for your motion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the order of taking for the property at one seventeen Turner Road to construct and make repairs to the seawall structure on said property pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter seventy-nine, section six, as amended in article sixteen of the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve special time.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Three...
I said aye.
Four to nothing is unanimous. Great. Thank you all. Moving on to item number eight, which is a discussion for the Hocker Peddler's License, the food cart, Mr. Healy. How are you?
Good, I'm good.
So, just your name and address.
Uh, James Healy, seventy-one Lighthouse Road.
Good. So you came to, just recap, you came to us before, you wanted to put a vending hotdog device machine cart?
Cart.
In Pier forty-four parking lot. We suggested a couple other places. You went and looked at it, and you had to get approval from the Cituate Tavern to sell something across the street from them. You've looked at the other place, don't like it, the other place we suggested on Jericho Road, that's not your, your choice. We've got a letter here from Cituate Tavern saying that they don't mind you selling across the street, and now we're back again. And are you, you're still asking for your first choice to be the parking lot of Pier forty-four?
Correct.
In that back?
Be the southeast corner.
Southeast corner. So as you're looking at the building, far back, right near the water?
Correct.
Your backup choice in the material here that we have is on Cole Parkway, at the boat ramp?
Well, it's, I think, Conservation Park.
Sorry, Conservation Park.
Which, I don't know if that raises an issue as far as, I just thought of this the other day with, where does walk across the street? I don't know, with the three hundred feet?
Yep.
It's from the building itself or from the property, could be an issue.
We have to look at it. But the town, you'd be asking it from the town, not from a private.
Right, but it's, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So at this point in time, why don't we talk about his first choice, which is the Pier forty-four parking lot? We have a, we have a diagram of it. Someone's right here. And did Officer, was it Officer Donovan gonna go look and make sure that?
Thompson.
Thompson, sorry. I met with him a couple of weeks ago.
Yep, and this spot, I imagine, isn't any problems because it's far off the street. The other one, he was fine with those spots?
Yeah, for the most part, we both agreed on that, that particular spot, the southeast corner there of the parking lot.
Okay, so we'll deal with that. So any discussion on going into the Pier forty-four parking lot? The only thing that, you know, at some point in time over the next couple of months, we're gonna be doing something with that area.
That's fine.
So if we knock the building down, turn it into a park, do something, then obviously that's all gonna be decontentionate and you'd have to move.
Understandable.
If we decide to do that.
My only, raising this after Mr. Healy had come in a year ago, we had a discussion with another applicant for the same site.
Mm-hmm.
At the time, the board said no, and actually suggested another location in town. Out of fairness to that applicant, who is not an applicant this year and has no intention of a Hocker Peddler's License, I do feel it's important for us to at least raise that issue and discuss it, given the fact that a year ago we said no to somebody who asked for the same location. And how does the board feel? Because I don't recall specifically the justification, other than I thought it was due to the fact that we were gonna be doing something with the site, and now that we have a report of how the board feels about suggesting Mr. Healy use that location for this year or for the summer.
Good point.
Did that, we vote a, a license for that person last year at another location, and did they use it?
No.
No.
So they got a, a license for Egypt?
Yes, correct.
Was it Egypt Beach Parking Lot, and they never came and picked it up?
Nor, nor has that same person applied this year?
They didn't apply this year. I don't think we're, I don't think we have the responsibility to, if somebody applies in one year, to hold their reservation for any certain spot for a whole nother year. You know, a lot can change in here, a lot can change in a couple of months. The building, a lot has happened on the property in terms of them coming back to us, and, you know, it was kind of in an early state of flux, I mean, this is my opinion, when she came to us before. So I believe if she had come again this year and asked for it, you know, then there would be a conflict, and we would probably say, well, you asked for it the year before. She may have, you know, some sort of standing above you, but she didn't. And, you know, it's one of those weird scenarios where maybe she wishes she had, maybe she's not interested at all, seeing as she didn't pick up the one from last year, but, you know, we can only deal with what we're given, I think. Any other thoughts or comments?
Only comment I have is, is that we're not, by virtue of granting it this year, there's not a, a right or an, I don't wanna say a right, but I guarantee that next year that's location will be there, given the fact that the board is gonna be making some decisions on that property.
Yeah, understand.
Could very well be there for the next ten or fifteen years.
Right, just in the meantime.
Just to let you know, Mr. Healy.
Whatever you guys decide, and we'll take it from there, but for now, it's...
Want a motion?
Please.
Sure.
Don't want us to talk about it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't think anyone...
No. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a Hocker Peddler's License to James Michael Healy, doing business as Harbor, Harbor Dogs, for a mobile cart to be located at Pier forty-four Parking Lot, with the specific location in that parking lot to be coordinated with the Cituate Police Department's Traffic Enforcement Officer and the Board of Selectmen in accordance with all the conditions set forth in the Hocker Peddler's Policy, number fifty-three dash twelve. The applicant may sell the following products: all beef hotdogs, chips, candy bars, bottled water, and soda.
Second? Second by Mr. Norton. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Mr. Healy.
Good luck, Mike.
Moving on to item number nine. This is a, the town response to an alleged open meeting law complaint. As most of you know, or may know, if you, if you read the Mariner, there was an allegation that the Board of Selectmen violated open meeting law, and a complaint was filed against the editor, or from the editor of the Mariner against the town. The proper procedure for that is for the town to respond to the specific allegations. The proper procedure for that is for the town to respond to the specific allegations. Town council has done that, and we've all been given the document that has been prepared, we've all read it, we've made our own changes to it through the town administrator, and we have a final document in front of us that needs to be submitted to the Mariner for their review. At that point in time, it'll go where it goes based on how they feel about the response. There was a comment in the Mariner that said that we filed for an extension. The reason why an extension was filed was not because we were tardy in doing anything, it was filed because it has to be voted in an open meeting, and this was our next open meeting, which is tonight. So, the document is prepared, and I'm happy with it. If the rest of the board is, we can-
Motion.
-make a motion to adjourn.
Move the board of selectmen, move that the board of selectmen has reviewed and approved the response prepared by town council relative to the alleged open meeting law violation and to submit it to the applicable parties on our behalf.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero. Moving on to item number 10, which is the appointment for a designate to participate in the school contract votes pursuant to Chapter 150E. And I wanna, you know, thank the school committee and Mike Hayes for staying on top of this. We talked about this, who was chair, you were chair last, you know, we talked about this last year. Per Chapter 150E, the board of selectmen can have a designate be involved in the contracts of other parties, and the school committee has asked us to be involved, and in this motion here, we're going to assign, is that the proper word? Appoint-
Point.
-the town administrator to sit on that committee on our behalf, and she'll be one of five-
Six.
Six, with the superintendent. So, the committee, the superintendent, and Tricia will be, no, no, the superintendent's not.
Five school committee-
Five school committee-
And the board's designate.
And the board's designate, so there'll be one of six on the committee. And the school contract is up in June, so they're starting to get into those negotiations now. Any questions, comments? Motion?
Move the board of selectmen appoint Patricia A. Van Kezey, town administrator, is the board's designate, to participate in the school contract votes pursuant to Chapter 150E of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, four to zero. Moving on to item number 11, which is acceptance of a gift, a memorial bench on Glades Road in the Minnet Beach area, and what we're doing here is, having done this, Al's there, correct me where I'm wrong, there's a party in town who will keep anonymous right now, who is purchasing a bench from the town and getting it installed by the town at their expense, and actually giving it to the town, to the property of the town, and what they will do is inscribe something on the bench, you know, for a loved one or someone that's passed away. And we've accepted a number of these over the years, this is probably the first one this year, but all the expenses are covered by the donor, and we sub out to get it constructed properly, and we get it put on a place of, don't read that, no?
No.
They don't want to.
Okay.
And that's what it is, so.
To clarify this, and make clear to the public, the reason that we're not reading the name now is because the donor is doing it in memoriam to a friend's passing and would like to then have a ceremony to do that, so therefore it's not publicly.
Right, typically, we would say it was, but in this case, because of the ceremonies that are coming up, they want it to be a secret.
Just on that point out, is the DPW aware or told when it's finalized and when it's put up at all, or is DPW involved, or? Reason why I'm asking is that, is that once it's public, it would be nice to then come back and say, okay, when we talked about this back in May, let's just give some acknowledgement, that's my point. Who gets notified that it's finally installed?
Well, they actually install it, they hire the contractor.
They hire the contractor to install it.
You do, okay. So, if you, could you let us know?
We have the bench made, we have the, we have it delivered, we install the bench and tell the, in this case, the donor of it, so that he or she can arrange for their ceremony.
I was gonna say, once the ceremony's been done, could you at least inform the board so that we can then-
Yes.
-publicly announce it, that's my point. Motion?
Motion, please.
Move the board of selectmen vote to accept, on the town's behalf, a gift of a granted memorial bench to be installed on the edge of Glades Road by Minnet Beach.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is four, nothing, unanimous. Moving on to item number 12, which is the reorganization of the board. At this point, I'll ask for any nominations, there's three positions that we're discussing, actually, two, the chair, the vice chair, and the clerk. Typically, the prior chair sits as the vice chair, as John did this year. So, why don't we start with the chair, are there any nominations for someone to be-
I move that the board of selectmen vote Joseph P. Norton to serve as the chairman of the board of selectmen for the town of Situate.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris reluctantly, no. Joe? You didn't second yourself. Any discussion? Great, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
I move that the board of selectmen vote Sean Harris to serve as clerk of the board of the selectmen of the town of Situate.
Don't second that. I thought we were gonna put Rick, leave Rick on, I don't care, it's fine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Norton.
Reven.
Yep. Any discussion? None discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's four to zero unanimously in favor of that, so, and I, do you have to vote for the vice chair, or is that just our?
I think it's a default.
By default. Great.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, can I just have one moment of personal privilege, if I may?
John.
John's got the card, John can ask for the moment of privilege.
I'm gonna hand it to you, he's gonna speak it.
I'm not gonna speak at all. Here's a card, a card for you, and signed by selectman, town administrator, and Sheila McKim. Thank you really for all your work, it was not an easy year, I mean, there's no such thing as an easy year, but this was particularly a difficult one, we thank you for it. We have a little memento, a gift to be given to you, which is in the mail, I guess it's the best way. So, you'll be getting that in a week.
Hey, mail cars?
But again, thank you very much for everything you've done, we really appreciate it, the town appreciates it, you've just had a great job.
Thank you, thank you. This is probably the fastest meeting we've had since I've been the chair, and this will be my last opportunity to talk. It's been a privilege to be the chair, I like doing it, I like being a selectman, as we all do, it's hard work, there's a lot of time involved, but we do get a lot out of it, and I know that the board has taken definite steps forward that will benefit the town in the long term. I know that we've done that this year. I wanna thank all of you, the board up here, for your hard work and the time that you put into this. I wanna thank the town employees for all the support that they give us and all the background work and information that they give us before meetings. I particularly wanna thank the town administrator, Tricia Van Kezey, you do a phenomenal job, we don't always see eye to eye, but we deal with a lot of issues, I respect your professionalism, I respect your hard work, you're definitely an asset to this town, and the far majority of the people in this town know and realize that, so thank you for your work and the work that you do to make us look good up here. Lastly, just like to thank the two other groups, you know, the first one is Four Little Kids, Sophia, Matthew, Olivia, and Michael. The novelty of seeing your dad on TV on Tuesday nights wears off real quickly, as you all know, and, you know, now it's just one less night that you can play catch, or help with homework, or all that sort of stuff, so thank you guys for your support. And lastly, who, probably the most important, is my lovely wife, Ann, you know, it's truly a team event, as all of you guys know, you know, she supports us and me in this effort, and she's very involved in the town also, and her activities always take the backseat to this, and I don't know if that's fair, but that's the way it happens, and, you know, she's a great person for allowing that to happen, so thank you, honey, for all this as well, it's, this is for you too. Thank you all, and I know I'm passing the gavel over to very competent hands, does that happen now, or?
Won't you finish it off, by the time we change-
Change seats?
This is good as well.
Great, thank you all very much. We'll move on to item number 13 then, which is other business. None?
None.
I'll hold, I can hold off for another, a couple of weeks.
Okay, I'm gonna rattle through a few real quick things. Bourndale, I wanna thank all of the sixth grade teachers that take all these kids to Bourndale, it's a wonderful experience, the teachers stay overnight for a whole week, and it's really, the kids love it, and the teachers, and then the parents that go and help out, they give a lot of time and energy, and it's really above and beyond what they do, and they, they're awesome for doing it. There's a couple of plays coming up that I want people to be aware of on Friday and Saturday night, there's one, I think, John, you'll be up, one of them, The Little Mermaid over at the high school on Friday night, and Robin Hood on Saturday night. Great shows, they're free, come and get some entertainment. There is, last week, there was Spring for the Arts held over at the high school, where art, art pieces from all of the kids in all of the schools gets presented there, and it is unbelievable, the talent that these kids have in, at such a young age, and you walk around, literally, the whole high school first floor is taken up with art all over the place, and every kid has at least one piece in there, and the work that the high school kids are doing, it's just phenomenal. So, the people that put that together and, and all the artists, you know, thank you, it's a great job. And lastly, the music festival at Gates, which is coming up on June 9, which is again, kids bands, and food and music, and it's a great event for everyone to go to on June 9. So, that's all I got. Oh, and the parade, yes.
Parade, yeah.
Memorial Day this weekend, on Monday, we have a parade that we march from town hall up to the common, and then we have a ceremony up there. The chairman will be given a 45-minute speech about the significance of Memorial Day, but that starts at 11, is it?
I'm gonna say 10 at town hall, but I'm not-
10.
I think it's 10.
Oh, it's at 10, okay. Check the website to confirm the date, but, you know, the baseball teams, the different sporting events, the Girl Scouts, everybody marches up there, it's a great time up at the common. And that's all I have. Anything else that I missed? Great. Move on to item number 14, acceptance of the minutes.
Move the board of selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes of June 28, 2011.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero.
Abstain, if I may.